To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the roll please.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Hines.
Here.
President Rowley.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marasek.
Here.
Trustee Bond.
Present.
And we do have a quorum this evening. Under our first item, which is number four, public participation, we have public comment, which is a two-minute opportunity for any member of the public that's here this evening that wishes to address the board. I would ask that you keep your comments to the two-minute timeframe if you do have comments this evening. And if we have repeat people who have the same comments about the same issue, if you could have a spokesperson maybe summarize what the concerns might be. That being said, if there's anybody that wishes to address the board this evening, come on down.
My name is John Ross. I live at 1104 South Broadway, and I have concerns about the Habitat for Humanity project going on. According to village building codes, all subdivisions are required to have curbs and sidewalks installed by the contractor. My question is, are these requirements going to be waived for Habitat for Humanity so they can build? And if so, why? When that clearly gives Habitat for Humanity an unfair advantage over legitimate contractors. Also, has anyone taken the time to actually look at how the lots were divided? I have the plots and everything up here if you want to look. There's a natural drainage swale from Lincoln to Route 25, right next to my property. Moving this drainage conduit could have disastrous effects on my property and surrounding parcels. I would like an independent engineering firm to inspect this and provide a written report regarding their findings. I find it troubling that current long-time residents have no say about plans to build low-income housing in their community. I spent the last 16 years buying, building, maintaining my home using my sweat equity, my money, with no help from anyone, only to see it being destroyed so others can feel all warm and fuzzy about themselves. I wonder how they would feel if the tables were turned. By the way, thanks for two minutes on this important issue. I will make it my personal mission to get out the vote come next election. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I just wanted to make one comment on that. And as you guys can probably see from the agenda, there isn't really an agenda item about Habitat, that what you're talking about. Tonight's kind of a presentation about the Habitat program itself. But that doesn't just, you know, I don't want to discredit what you said. We will take that, obviously take that into consideration if any plans on that parcel move forward or whatnot. To my knowledge, no plans have been submitted at all to village staff on this issue. So when we met down, down here a few months ago, I think it was right before Christmas, since then and now, there's been no activity as far as the village is concerned on this. Otherwise, you know, I told you that I'd keep you guys.
Why did we receive a letter saying specifically that that's what this was going to be about?
You know what? If you do want to address the board, you can come down. I don't think, we didn't send out letters on this.
We did.
Okay.
Since Habitat was coming to discuss their program, we wanted the homeowners in that area to be aware so they could come and participate if they wanted to hear the discussion.
That's right.
My name is Dean Schmidt. I live at 123 Keck Avenue, smack dab in the middle of where you are planning your development. I moved there less than three years ago. Reason we moved here was because of the quiet openness of the area, the proximity to the river. We loved it. I put a lot of work into that house. Some of you might have know that that house was fairly dilapidated and unoccupied for about a year or more when I bought it. And I put a lot of money and a lot of work into that house to try to see some kind of profit out of it, maybe. I think you're thwarting any possibility of me seeing any type of profit whatsoever off of that home. If anything, I think you might be negating it. But anyway, I can't think of any homeowner in his right mind who would want construction next to his home, let alone on both sides of this home. All of us are worried about property value going down and taxes going up. My suggestion is, there are so many homes that are dilapidated in the area that I don't see why they don't buy those and fix them up. They'd be doing the community a big favor by doing that as well and helping people out at the same time, not building new homes and pressing people into a crowded situation. I know that the land was donated to Habitat for Humanity. I also have a suggestion that I think, just leave it well enough alone. Habitat for Humanity should just donate it to Montgomery and just leave it, let it go. I'll even volunteer to cut the grass for you. That's about it. You know, I think I can speak for a lot of people that live on Keck Avenue. We all bought into the area. Polly just moved in here, there. Mary just moved in a couple of years ago. I moved in less than three years ago. All right across from each other. And I know we all bought in for the same reason. We have fields and we love it. And we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the board on this?
My name's Polly Cortina. I live at 116 Keck. I guess, one, I'm confused why we're here, because I don't need an editorial on HUD. I could just drive around Aurora and look at all the homes that they've donated that have turned to trash, which are their track record that I've seen in Aurora, that I've lived there almost my whole life. I don't need their pictures or their explaining. I thought we were here because they were going to tell us what they were going to do. Number one, I don't want no houses being constructed over a five-year period. Number two, what moron in their right mind would put a kid on Route 25? Because usually HUD homes come with kids. That's a busy street. And the other one was the drainage, but I guess you already covered that, so there's no point in me wasting any time with that. But I thought today was about what they were going to do. I don't need an education on what they do. I could drive around Aurora and see what they did. Half their HUD homes are foreclosed and trashed. That's not what I want by my house. That's not why I lived there.
Is there any other member of the public?
I loved it because it was open in the front and it's open in the back. And in the front, which they want to build, I see deer.
What's your address, ma'am?
128 Keck Avenue.
Thank you.
Montgomery. I see deer. During the day, I was sitting outside of my front porch, a mother and her fawn walked right by me. I've seen coyotes over there, minding their own business. And I've seen, I think they're weasels. I could be wrong, but a weasel lays out in that area on its back and just suns. And it's just beautiful, and I really miss it if they put homes right in my front of my house. Make me very sad and don't want it to happen. So I hope it doesn't happen and nobody moves in over there, because it would make me sad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I live at 123 Keck Avenue. And we came here, it was beautiful, okay? We've got all this acreage around us and the neighborhood's quiet, okay? Most of us are retired, okay? And we don't want the comings and goings, the construction. I mean, what's the point? I mean, it's, well, and I'm not, I mean, I'm all about giving, but, and I do it daily. However, to have two or three homes next to us and all the construction, and like I said, the comings and goings, I just, I don't see it. We have a peaceful neighborhood. We're all established there. Why pinpoint us with a couple of homes here or there? You know, it's, can't you find, like, acreage to put a bunch of homes on and kind of let our established neighborhood be? So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm correct in thinking that the village board's not trying to find any property. Am I correct? This isn't a village board issue. This is a Habitat issue. So when it, when you speak, the village board is looking for something. That's not, that's not true. It's, we're, Habitat is coming before the village board. It's not the village board who's looking to do this. It's Habitat that's coming before the village board to ask to do this.
You know, I kind of want to keep it, keep.
I've got Don Bolzfelder owns the, the Brighter Chapel there. He can't be here tonight. And he, when he left, he was on vacation in the wintertime, he gave me these signatures on petition. I want to use present them to you.
Certainly.
Right here. This is good enough. It's five figures.
Thank you, John. Okay? If there isn't any other member of the public wishing to address the board, we'll go ahead and move on to the regular items on the meeting. Items for discussion this evening. Item A, which is Habitat for Humanity presentation. With that, welcome Jeff Barrett to the podium for a presentation.
I'm going to address you, but I'm also going to dress, to dress you as well. First off, I understand your concerns and I understand what you're thinking. I really do. We were just donated this property last year. We have not made any plans on it yet. We have discussed a little bit with the city on what their requirements are. Every how, let me first address this one thing. HUD. We are not HUD. We are not HUD. We don't have anything to do with HUD. And HUD has nothing to do with us, okay? We are an independent nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, that builds and rehabs homes. Well, you want to mention that. We do rehab homes and take over foreclosed or dilapidated properties and rehab them. And we do that for people who are working families, who make income, maybe very similar to some of you, anywhere from $22,000 to $45,000 a year. They have to put in sweat equity on those homes, 500 hours on helping to build Habitat homes. Before they even get their own, they have to put in at least 200 on their own. They give them financial training, home maintenance training. They are given home construction training. We do build the houses with a lot of volunteers and they get a good deal, but they don't get it for free. We did a study about a year ago, and one of the things we found, it was an independent study, not done by us, and we paid for this independent study. And one of the things we found was that 93%, 3% of the people don't understand what we do. And that's really what we're trying to come here tonight to tell, tell you. First off, they think that we give away homes to homeless people. We don't. And we never have. We never will. Our homes are built for working families. They do make 30% to 60% of median income. An area median income right now is about $73,500. That's what we base our numbers on. We build these houses for families that, like I said, have to put in sweat equity. And they have to take financial training classes and a bunch of other classes. They get a mortgage. They have to pay back on that mortgage. They are no different than you and I in that. They're paying for the mortgage. They're paying for the house. They get a good deal that you and I would all like to have. They get a 0% interest mortgage, but they do get a mortgage. We are the bank and the mortgage holder. So if they are not responsible, we can foreclose on them, and we have. We've only had one foreclosure, but we will foreclose on them if we have to. We built 50 homes. We've had one foreclosure, but we do hold them accountable to pay. Because of the sweat equity, because of the training, they do take care of their homes. Now, some of you know, most of you are maybe are newer trustees here, we built a 10-house subdivision in Montgomery already, on the corner of Sherman and Pearl. And you can go buy those houses today, and they're as nice today as they were when we built them. Some of them are better looking, because these families take pride in these homes and they take care of them, just like you do. I understand that. I really do. You don't want someone moving into your area that isn't going to take care of homes. I get that, believe me. I don't want someone moving into where I live and not take care of homes. We actually build covenant restrictions into our mortgages, that if they have criminal activity in the house, they have defaulted. If they don't take care of the house and we can't go and inspect it, they've defaulted. If they try to resell the house and do it to some mortgage, some landlord who's going to rent the house, they've defaulted. We put first and second mortgages on the house to keep them from doing that. This house is to be for these folks. Out of the 50 homes we built, 47 of our folks still live in them. One, their income went up. They started their own business. They were very successful, and they moved on and they got a bigger house. The other two were transfer situations, and we put new, carefully selected families into those homes. I'll just give you an example from right now, from this year. Just from this year, since January, we have had 23 applications. Of those, only four are even under consideration. That's how carefully we select these families. Yes. I can, I don't know if, what's procedure here.
You know what? He hasn't a spot on the agenda this evening. He's going to be making a presentation to the board tonight, so.
No, I will, I will stop.
Real quick, I would just remind.
I will stop whenever you want me to, Mr.
Sorry. I just would remind the residents that if you would like more time, you have that opportunity to put yourself on a future agenda, and you'll, you'll get, I think it's five minutes to address the board at that time. So there are, I believe there is ample opportunity for you to comment on an issue like this going forward, and then you did address this this evening. So at this point.
And I don't want to take any more time than you guys collectively. I really don't. I, I understand that, okay? The other, the other thing is that every house we've built has been built to code and standards of every village or city that we've been in. So you're worried about the runoff. We would be too. We're not going to let it happen. We work closely with the village on what those things are. We're working on a development that's a five-house development in Aurora right now, on Soffisburg and Beckwith. We spent months working with the city on making sure we had the proper drainage and grading systems for that property. So we understand your concerns, and all I can say is we're not Jericho Circle. We're not Cabrini-Green. We're not putting multifamily housing there. We're building individual, single-family houses. And at this point, we haven't even, we haven't even, I'm sorry.
Do you want them next door to you?
Those families? The families we select, I would have them next door to me, yes. Absolutely. There are, we, there are, we partner them.
You know what? We're not getting into a question and answer. If you do want, if you do have questions for Jeff afterwards, you can certainly, if he's available, you can chat with him. But at this time, let's, you want to move on with the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, you know, we had a presentation, but basically, I understand your concerns. Those address it. They, they basically say exactly what I was saying, okay? And these are, these families are working hard, just like you are. So from here, what we do, and they also have an economic impact on the community. We haven't even made our plans yet for what we're going to do there. But we will keep, with the character of the neighborhood, curbs are, gutters are required and sidewalks are required. We will do that. We will do whatever we are asked to do to comply with the codes. So, any questions from the trustees at all on that?
This is the first time that I look at this. This wasn't sent to us. No, should I do it?
That's basically, tells you who we are, what we do. I also have cards here. I will hand those out to you. You can call me. You can come, our office is in Montgomery. We're actually in the old village hall in Montgomery. You can come and see me and talk to me anytime. I'm happy to do that. Any other questions? I don't want to take any more of your time. Any other questions?
Did you want to go through the presentation?
Basically, I kind of already did.
Okay.
Yeah. I wanted to address their concerns specifically, so.
You know, I just had one.
Sure.
One quick question on this. The, the homes then are owned by the resident?
Yes, they are.
And not by Habitat? Okay.
And not by Habitat.
Are there any other questions from the board at this point? If you want to flip through the presentation?
About that. Sorry. So Habitat holds the mortgage.
We hold the mortgage. Yes, we do.
And then they become, so it's no different than any other mortgage situation? So you actually own the home? Habitat does?
It is a little different, because we put restrictions on it. Basically, what is a mortgage? A mortgage is a contract, okay? And we put restrictions on them that no bank would ever do. In other words, they can't sell to a landlord. We have right of first refusal on anything on that house. So we make sure that the families that we put in those house continue to be vetted or whoever moves into that house continues to be vetted. That's more restrictions than anybody else has. So, but we are the mortgage holder. Probably about a third of our families still come to our office to make their payments.
Do you think that we could receive a copy of your restrictions, your restrictive agreement?
Hey, you want a copy of the actual mortgages?
You've made several references to an agreement or restrictions. Could we see those?
In the presentation, they're there. But if you want a copy of the actual mortgages that have those in there, I can have our attorney provide that for you.
Sample, sure.
Sure. Yeah, it'd be a sample. Well, can't be any ongoing current mortgage, of course.
I assume it's a fill-in-the-blank kind of form? You don't recreate it every time?
I'm sorry, say that again.
I assume it's a fill-in-the-blank kind of form? You don't create a new one every, every time you do an agreement?
Oh, no. We create a new mortgage every single time. We go through title companies.
The restrictions are, I think it's always looking for, the restrictions are the same.
Restrictions are actually in the mortgage, in different paragraphs within the mortgage. Yes.
Is that the general standard mortgage?
No, that's, that's the difference. Because we're carrying the mortgage ourselves, we can put covenants and restrictions in our mortgages that you guys will never have in your mortgages. If I can go through just, these are how we protect our sponsors, how we protect the community, and how we protect the families. Everybody has that. Everybody has a stake in this.
Hey, Jeff, could you talk into the microphone?
I have a quick question. I have a question. You guys are prepared to go through this and give a presentation on this, correct?
I am.
I, I would like to see that, please.
Great. Also, real quick, you towards you guys the opportunity to speak without being in a rush, so you can afford the same opportunity that you basically have right now, but you can speak basically on.
You go ahead and take this one.
Okay.
They have more time.
Okay, and if they have time, we're hoping to have the same opportunity.
They have more funds that live there.
Okay, then after this, you can present.
Go ahead, gentlemen.
My name is Jeff Corus. I am the fund, fund development director. I'm the person responsible for going to all the businesses, community leaders, and churches within our service area. A lot of people think Habitat for Humanity is this one great organization. There's 1,600 different affiliates throughout the United States that is Habitat for Humanity. This is our turf. This is our turf with Southern Kane in Kendall County. We call on the churches, the community leaders, and the businesses, because I can tell you from my own perspective, when I first started with Habitat, I thought Habitat collected aluminum cans. I had no idea what was going on. I came to, I came to Habitat to offer some assistance, and well, here I am today. But that's neither here nor there. What I want to share with you guys is I get it. I totally get where everyone is coming from here, and we've done something that the typical mortgage market, the typical industry could not possibly do. We've completely changed the real estate paradigm, how people can buy a house. Who are our families? They're U.S. citizens, or they have to be a permanent residence, a green card. They're working family. These families cannot get a home unless they have a job. Our income level, as Jeff presents it, is $22,000 to $45,000. They have to have some decent credit. We're not going to look at them as a lender. We're going to, if they've had a BK or if they've had a bruise, how, why, and why aren't you going to get into that again? They demonstrate a need for decent housing. I did something. These people have to have a job. Jeff said there's only a few people in the system. We're interviewing their business, we're interviewing their bosses, we're looking at their credit. These are solid citizens, and as we go into it, I'm sorry.
We do background checks.
And background checks. I'm sorry. I promise I won't do it again. And they have to live in the area. We are restricted by fair housing lending acts. We're not going to discriminate against anyone, as long as there's a need that's there. We've been doing this for 25 years. We built 50 homes in 25 years. These people are still in these homes. Okay, what is Fox Valley? We have completely changed the real estate paradigm on how somebody can buy a house. We can build a new construction home with the land for $110,000. How do you do that? We can do it for one thing that the businesses can't do, because we're a not-for-profit. We can do it without profit, and we can do it without labor. So you guys put your own number on what $110,000 house that we build. You talk about rehab houses. We would love to do rehab houses, but we're a not-for-profit. We get property, we get rehab homes as they come to us. We, if somebody donates land to us, we're, we're in a great situation. So, so the, the property and these rehabs come to us in many different ways. So we take in donations from businesses. We take in money and we take in building materials. We talk to electricians and plumbers and HVAC people and manufacturers of furnaces and air conditioners, and we ask them for in-kind donations. Rush Copley Hospital, they've come to us because they have many, many people that are in the $22,000 to $45,000 that have been perennial renters. I think everybody knows here, a typical three-bedroom, two-bath home in our area is $1,300 to $1,500. Our mortgages are $650, and that's with taxes. We rock these people's world. We make these people, you guys are used to seeing charities and non-for-profits, like food kitchen, soup kitchens, homeless shelters. You need a can of soup, we give you a can of soup. You need another can of soup, we give you another can of soup. We want to do a one-and-done. We want to build this person up, realize their potential, that they can actually be a homeowner. Then the next thing you do, they start realizing what they can do in their life, in their future. They go from that $22,000 to $45,000 job, and now they're making $50,000 and $60,000. Do we throw them out? Of course not. That means double thumbs up. We've succeeded. We've helped the community create a solid individual. These partner families, they construct the homes. We don't get, we don't want any breaks from the government, and we're not asking for anything. They have to be energy star, energy efficient, up to code. If it needs a sidewalk, if it needs a, whatever it needs, we're going to do it, because we want to be your neighbor. We want to be a good partner. We can't be on the 18th hole of a golf course, nor do they want us there. We can afford to go where we can afford to go, where the property's coming to us. The partner family purchases this home. There is no freebie here. We all know what happens when you give something away. When you give something away, it has exactly that same value. It has no value. We're taking a perennial renter, turning them into homeownership. What do you think that's going to do to the community? Homeownership versus rentals? We're going into these communities that need help. We're planting grass where the weeds are. We're taking a rental situation, turning it into homeownership. I've been a renter part of my life. I'm sure all of you have been at, maybe at one time or another. There is just not the pride of ownership. It's kind of just the way it is. The partner family pays The partner family pays property taxes, insurance, it's all escrowed into their system. What I didn't tell you guys is, we partner that $110,000 home, new construction, or a rehab home for 85,000, we partner it up with a 20-year interest-free mortgage. It's a beautiful thing for these people. 650 versus rental. They're going hand-to-mouth. They contribute a minimum of 350 hours of sweat equity. Here's where we succeed, that I meet with banks, I meet with businesses all the time, and they can't believe our success record. 50 homes, one default. We're going to check their credit, we're going to check their background, we're going to check their employment. Here's where it all changes. We tell these people, you need to do 200 hours of sweat equity on somebody else's house. Everybody runs for the hills. They say, where's my cheese? They don't realize this is a pay-it-forward program. This is building the community. They're going to put 200 hours in on somebody else's house. Then, because they're perennial renters, we have to teach them how to be a homeowner, how to change a furnace filter, how to do things like that. You can appreciate the renter. He's either going to call the landlord, or he's going to let the $5 fix turn into the $5,000 repair. That can't happen when you're a homeownership, when you're a homeowner. And then finally, they put in 100 hours of sweat equity on their own home. By that time, they're all over it. But the reality it is, is there's lots of people that apply for these homes, the people that you guys are thinking about, that don't get into the program because they don't have the character to understand that this is a pay-it-forward program and it's good for the community. And we talked about these here. These are the businesses that I call on every day that really have no idea that a Habitat family works for them. Rush Copley Hospital, Pressons, Coldwell Banker, Lexus of Naperville Menards, the list goes on and on. There's 50, there's 50 businesses there. I call on these businesses and they say, well, that's those people. I said, excuse me, but these are your people. Your people are working here, and we only accept working families. What do we do for the community? You guys have one, one opinion, and we, we really do appreciate it. I deal with this every day. I understand. We're just trying to share with you our side of it. We're going to take an unimproved piece of property that a builder won't build on. Lot size, location, whatever, by the time profit and labor's in there, maybe the equation doesn't work. We're going to turn that unimproved piece of property into improved property. That's good for the community. Sure. Well, we're on economic development at this point, then we'll go to community. More utility subscribers. We've got a vacant piece of property. Now we have cable bills, we have utility bills, we have all the other utilities that come with it. Disposable income. We're taking these families that were paying 1,300 a month in rent, we're giving them 650 mortgage payment. They own a home for their employer. If any of you are employers here, we're taking, we're, we're adding employee retention onto a program that we're offering the employer. These people are showing up with reliable transportation. Their kids have got books. Their kids have, you're not going to see an 80-inch LCD in our home and the kids without books. That's the character of these families that are coming in, coming into our group. Consumer spending in general, grocery stores, what it pumps into the economy. Business development, we're selling insurance policies to these people, retail, bank deposits, it goes on and on. Community development, we're stabilizing and revitalizing communities. What we're offering you is we're going to take rent, rental properties with, we're not going to take one bad disheveled house and turn it into another. We're developing these neighborhoods that have once been great neighborhoods that have just had problems. Yep.
What about a nice neighborhood and, yeah, leaving it, and instead of spotting a couple homes here or there?
Okay.
Our property values are going to go down. Don't tell me it's not.
We'll go on to that.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm not, no, please, I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
I'll be happy to talk.
Yeah, I'm not ignoring you. I'm, I'm just moving forward.
Yeah, you know what? If we could continue with the presentation, then if you do have questions afterwards, we'll...
These are owner occupied versus rentals. That can't be not good for you, for the community, for everyone. Increased property values in neighborhoods. When you see, have you seen our houses on Pearl? Have you seen our houses on Sherman? You guys are lumping HUD homes, subsidized homes, all the ridiculous things that are in there with our homes. They're not the same. They're not even remotely close. There's no parallel between the two.
I'm sorry, our homes are already built.
You know what, ma'am? Ma'am?
I'm sorry, I'll leave if you want, but I just don't get it.
If, if you do, if there is an outburst again, I am going to have to ask you to leave. You can watch the presentation from the hallway at that point.
Reducing substandard homes through refurbishment and sale. We're going to go to rehab homes. We're going to take that house that was infested with termites and every, whatever it needed. We're going to do whatever we have to do. Maybe there was drug activities. We're going to turn this into a spit-shined house. Affordable homeownership opportunities for the families. We're, we're offering an incredible opportunity to these, to these families that are in the workforce. High rent, low income, it just destabilizes the workforce. If you're, if you're running hand-to-mouth because you can't afford your rent, everything else suffers also. Employee retention. We're offering employees a program that we will go to their, we will go to their businesses and talk to them about getting into this program, and they look at it as a benefit program that they would have never had before. We do team building, volunteerism. This is what I wanted to share with you. I didn't mean to minimize what you were saying. These are our homes. They're not Jericho Circle. I just took that picture today. That's Sherman. That's a gorgeous house. It was built many years ago on a nice lot, driveway. It's, it's beautiful. There's Cabrini-Green, and there's a house on Pearl. I just took these pictures today. They're not 10 years old. These are the homes we're building. Protecting the sponsors and the family. We're not going to let this person, we're, we're going to sell this person, this family, and our definition of a family is a single mom, a single dad, a, a couple, whatever, whatever it is. We don't discriminate against religion, we, whatever, whatever your beliefs are, that's, that's, that's just fine. We're not going to sell this house for $110,000 that has a true market value of probably 180, 190,000 and let them turn around and turn it into an investment club. They can't, they can't flip this house. They can't turn it into a rental. They cannot rent this house. They, they can have one family in it. They can't rent this house, so they can't turn it, a rental situation back into a rental situation. Those are in our covenants that you would never see in a traditional mortgage. If these people want to move, they can move anytime they want. All we ask is the first right of refusal to buy it back, put another habit, a good Habitat family in there, we'll give them the equity that they've earned on it, and everything is fair and square. Criminal activity. Would you like to be guaranteed that there won't be any criminal activity in a home? You can't do that in a regular mortgage. We can. We can tell you that if there's criminal activity, it's a cause for default. I think that's a pretty good benefit. They're not going to be able to take equity loans on this, get themselves, get, get themselves in a, in a bad situation. And they earn their equity by paying down their mortgage, and we gladly give that to them. And in 20 years, they own the home. The property needs to be well-maintained. In every brochure that I hand out to every business, I list all 50 homes that we have built because we are proud of them, we want our donors to be proud of them, we want the community to be proud of them, we want you folks to be proud of them. So if that house is in disarray, if the gutters are hanging, if the shutters are falling down, we're going to tell them once, twice, 10 times to fix the house, and then we're going to go in there with a contractor and fix it. We're not going to, we're not going to give them a bill. We're going to put it onto their mortgage. We're not trying to hurt these people. We want to make sure that they're, that the house stays in good repair. Did the community use that? So that's the end of the presentation. I, I appreciate what you're saying, but we are very different than the thought process you have, so.
You know what?
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Absolutely. In every business, church. So you know, in every business, community leader and church that I go to, we have that in our brochure. We're, we're very proud of that.
You know what? Okay, real quick here. As the deputy chief said, if anybody after his presentation, if it's all right with the board, if there's one or two or several of you that wishes to address the board again on this topic with additional information, you know, we can entertain at this time. If you have questions specifically for Habitat, of course, we won't be able to answer those, and I would encourage you to go directly to Habitat with that. But unless the board objects, if you want to come to the board, we want you to have your opportunity to be heard on this. Obviously, there is no decision made on anything of any sort of development tonight, you know that. But if you do have, if you do have additional comments, please come to the board. Certainly.
Is that the corner, is that the Millet property?
Jeff. I'm sorry, what?
Is that Millet property on the corners, the southeast corner?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know what you mean by Millet?
That's the Millet property, a keck in Broadway, on the corner.
I would also ask that one person, if people are going to come up and say anything, that they come up to the podium. Enough of the conversations.
1964, I got the paperwork on it. This used to be owned by the village of Montgomery. They didn't want to mess with it.
You know what? You want to go to the microphone? This is, we're trying to actually have a meeting, so if you have something to address the board, you can talk to trustee Hines after the meeting.
Okay, they say my home's going to be worth more, but yet their home is built on a lot a third the size of mine. Isn't there any kind of, some kind of code or something that the lot size is all have to be similar? I mean, how can I have an acre lot there and then they're going to cram whatever the minimum lot size is right next to my home? Why do they have to build two of them? Why can't they just build one there and one on the other side? And you probably won't hear a whole lot more from me, but two houses in that little lot, and if you actually go out and look at that lot, what's got to be moved and stuff, you'd be better off with one home.
You know, if we, if we had a plan in front of us right now, I would ask staff to respond to that, but since we don't, we're not going to.
That's them. And then you really want to raise kids on Route 25? Have you ever seen the traffic there? I mean, seriously? A thousand cars a day go by there. They're flying by in the morning and night. I'm just saying. And they talk about crime. We have, as far as I know, we have no crime. I've never seen any over there. So if we have one crime issue over there after they move in, it's went up 100%. Do the math. And what's, what's, with the number of people in the family, okay? They buy this house and it's a couple and two kids. What's to stop their cousins and brothers and everybody else moving in? And what's the limit on cars out there? I see a one-car garage. So now I'm going to have cars parked all over the place with the increased traffic and stuff?
Can I ask a question? If, okay, if you, you bring up the, the fact that what's to keep their brothers and their cousins and stuff from moving in, but what's, what's to keep the same thing from happening in one of your homes?
In my house?
What, what's, how, how can we, how can we regulate that from, from happening at any of the houses?
I guess you can't, but when somebody actually has some skin in the game, meaning a regular down payment and stuff, they tend to take better care of their house than somebody that's got nothing in it but making a $400 payment. My taxes are going to be more than the house payment on that house, which, by the way, went up $1,400 last year. So you're going to tell me that by putting these three houses on here, that my property value's going to go up even higher and I'm going to pay more? You've got to be kidding me. I've probably got the highest taxes in Montgomery. I don't know anybody paying more than me other than my neighbor.
The highest tax subdivision in Montgomery is Orchard Prairie North.
And then what's this with the, the more, the first mortgage and the paydown? What do they do? They default on the first one, so they give them another one to keep them going? What kind of deal is that? What kind of business plan is that?
Did you just listen to the presentation that they gave?
Yes, I did.
Your, your figures are all not accurate. You're, you're talking about a $400 a month payment. They're saying 650.
650? Boy, you're killing it now.
You know what, trustee Youngerman? They, most of them are quiet while Habitat presented, so let's let him address the board. If you have questions or comments, we can talk about that later. I really would like to give everybody the opportunity now and move on with the meeting.
One more thing. Years ago in Aurora, I had a two-flat apartment, big old house converted to units. Aurora had a thing called, I don't know if the terminology is right, but densification of the neighborhood, because there was too many people getting in there. So they, they gave me a few thousand dollars, I don't know, 10,000 to convert that back to a single-family home to get less people in the neighborhood. Communities with more open space are better than pounding more people into that little area just so they can have their gem. The first thing you pull into Montgomery, you see is a Habitat for Humanity house. I mean, this, this is like the gold prize for them. It'll probably be on their website when they get it done. And all you're doing is wrecking the neighborhood by putting more houses. I don't care who buys in there. But put two houses on that one lot and one on the other lot, and me and my neighbors, we've got these big lots. I mean, how's that going to increase my property value?
Thank you.
And there's a one in here that we want a Habitat for Humanity home next year, nice home, because I'm sure you all live in decent places.
Thank you. With that, I think we'll move on this evening. If there are other comments, you want to come to another meeting, come on.
You know where I sign up?
Any member of the public can, can address the board at any one of our meetings, the two minutes at the beginning. You get two minutes at every meeting if you want to. Thank you. And I'd like to thank Habitat for coming this evening. This is good information for, I think, the board to have. I know that about a year ago, we sat down, I sat down with you guys to get an update of what you guys are working on, which is very similar to this, so I appreciate it. Move on this evening to item B, which is the tree program update. And with that, I will ask director Povens for his presentation on this.
Thank you, President Brawley. Actually, two of us are going to do the presentation tonight. We're going to start off with our Village Arborist Ed Path. It'll give the first half of the presentation, then I'll follow up at the end. So Ed, be careful of the buttons on the clicker, left and right arrow only, if you don't want to shut down. So our goal tonight is to give you an update on our urban forestry program, some of the accomplishments we've had in the last year, some of the challenges we'll face moving forward as a community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ed.
All right. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody Happy Earth Day, and it's a pretty good week to be able to talk to you about trees. Friday's Arbor Day. Briefly, before I get started about the main presentation, I want to let you know a little bit about, a little thing we're doing is we're putting some tags out on the trees. I have a couple volunteers that are going to help them out. The trees' tags come from the Morton Arboretum. And basically, you take the type of tree, the size of the tree, and you put it in a tree benefits calculator that was created by the Davy Tree Service. And it calculates out just basically estimated values of what a typical tree of that size in your area would benefit the community. So, this tree here is a 14-inch little leaf linden, and it was, it's located on Riverbend, at 50 Riverbend, which I think is next to Debbie's house. And basically, when you put it in the calculator, it shows that you get approximately $135 of value of benefits out of the tree. That comes from stormwater reduction, carbon reduction, electrical energy savings, property value increases. The thing also will show you that for this tree, there'll be like 1,126 gallons of stormwater that will never reach the ground because it'll be captured in the, on the surfaces of the tree. Carbon reduction would be 752 pounds of carbon captured in the tree per year. The electrical energy savings is 181 kilowatt hours. And then, property value increase of having this tree is $55.26. So, that's, you'll see these trees' tags around, and if someone asks you, that's what the, the deal is on it. So it's just for public awareness. So we'll start tonight with the presentation. All right, so the overview of the topics that we're going to cover tonight. We're going to go a little bit over the tree survey that we had completed last year, and then we'll move on to the forest maintenance, what we've been doing on our street trees. And then, for future challenges, I'm going to turn it over to Mike and let him address you on those portions, so. All right, for the Village Tree Survey, this is a map, it's a GIS map, showing the overall village, showing the location of the trees. And last year, when I came and spoke to the Board, I had kind of mentioned that probably 70 percent of our trees were west of Orchard Road. And I'm not really sure, I didn't check the exact numbers, but it looks like I was pretty, pretty accurate on that. But at that point, I definitely was totally guessing. Now, we do have accurate counts, so we know what we do have and what we are managing. So, the tree inventory was completed by Natural Path Urban Forestry Consultants with Mark Dunhaman. They located and they did the survey, they included 9,829 street trees, where they took GPS coordinates, they rated the health of the tree, identified the type of the tree, and then also suggested management actions that would be needed per the tree. So if the tree had like a major health concern or something, they might tell you that it needs to be removed, or if it has a split in it, but it's still in pretty good health, they might suggest cabling or something of that nature. And then they also ran all of the trees in the town through a tree, it's kind of like a real estate appraisal-type program for trees, and they came up with a total value for our forest of being $3.6 million. Oh, I've got to go back one second. It's kind of hard to see, but the map up on the right-hand side is an example of the map. The green dots on the tree are individual trees. And you can go to each individual tree and click on it, and you'll get a drop-down menu, and that menu will then will give you all the data that they had collected. So you can go to every site on there and get all the information for each particular tree, and then you can enter in information, too. So if I go out and we do street tree pruning, I can note the date that I pruned the trees. And then that way, when we're trying to complete our cycle, so many years from now, it's already categorized, you can just search out trees, you know, that were pruned four years ago, five years ago, and they'll bring them back so you know where to go back to again. The other thing would be, with it like, there was a case, the other day when we were pruning trees, where I saw that there was like, someone had used a ratchet strap to support the tree, and it had grown into the tree, and now there's metal hooks inside the tree. So I note that, so that when the tree dies, which it will from that, and we cut it down, we know not to run that through the chipper. So this is stuff we could have done by hand, but it's a lot more efficient to have the survey worked out. All right, and some of the management tools that we get out of this, you can compile different tables and things, but the table that's on the left is a species distribution table, and they, these are the percentages of, of each type of species that were located throughout the entire village. And basically, we had talked last year, too, about wanting more diversification of species of the trees and tree types, so that if we have another infestation of whatever, so that, similar to Emerald Ashbore, Emerald Ashbore is taking out a lot of trees, if we have more varieties of trees, hopefully, the pest will not be like a broad spectrum, and it'll only take out a smaller portion of our trees. So, and you see down on the right-hand side, it'll say, ideally, distribution qual, should say quantity, oh, distributional quality tree species targeting 5 percent per species is what you want to target. So hopefully, in 20 years, we can kind of get our numbers more in line with that. All right, and then the table on the right-hand side there is like, is condition distribution. And again, that's percentages, and it just tells you what percentages the different categories of health are within the village forest population, so. And then through pruning and some of our management practices, we can go back and reevaluate the trees over years, and we'll be able to tell if we're improving or declining and know what changes we need to make. This is example, the table of where they made recommendations for action on the trees. And those are the numbers of trees in there, and you can see that they would have the cabling, the monitoring, and, you know, different operations that we would need to do. Moving it back into the forest maintenance, this is kind of the things that we did last year. So, last year of removals, we had 452 trees that required removal. And most of this was due to the infestation of the Emerald Ashbore. I'll start here, too. Other removals, 53 of the removals we had contracted out. Those were the large trees that were larger than what Public Works can handle, or in a dangerous, busy situation where we don't have the expertise to take care of the tree. And then, 399 of those trees, we did remove in-house. And the picture there on the left is a tree that we were removing on Spring Haven Court. The new chipper that we had purchased last year has come in quite handy for these operations. The increased capacity of it has allowed us to take some bigger trees than we did before, and where we can chip the whole log instead of like, before, we would have to chip the branches and things, but the main part of the trunk, we would have to go back with another tractor and a truck and pick it up separately. This way, we're much more efficient.
Does that bucket truck that we purchased, does that help keep some more of the tree removal in-house?
It does, yes.
Okay.
And it also makes it safer, because like, like this one here, we're still using the pole pruner to cut a lot of the major branches, but it's a lot better to cut branches that you're above and let them fall below you than being the other way around, so. And then also, we have, there's an estimate, I kind of calculated the inches and diameters of the trees, and that's roughly, if we had contracted the work that we did out, it would have been $32,000 to $35,000 of additional money that we would have to have in the budget. Here we're covering the causes of removals, and again, this is what I was going to say before, that the large majority of it is still Emerald Ashbore death. We had five trees that were lost to automobile accidents, which I think is down from 11 from last year, so our driving has improved. Seven trees were removed to remediate hazardous conditions, so that would be a tree that has a major flaw in it, and it would have the potential to fall and harm property or individuals. One of the major trees that happened with this year, you might have noticed, a big oak tree on the curves on Montgomery Road, had a crown rod at the base, and it was leaning directly towards the road. So if it would have failed in a storm, it would have definitely gone down on the highway. So we took it down so that it doesn't injure anybody. It's sad to lose a big tree, but it's better than having some sort of injury with it. Twenty-five trees then were removed for death for other causes, and we have a large population, I think 35 percent of the trees in town are maples, and a lot of the maples we have are older silver maples. They were never really pruned or cared for early on, so they have a lot of health issues, and we're going to be losing a lot of those due to vericillium wilt and other decays. Last year, when I was here, we talked about the exponential growth of the population of Emerald Ashbore, and the corresponding ash tree removals would be the same, and that's a typical curve for that type of situation. And those are the removals over the past few years, and you can see that we're really starting to climb with the amount of removals. I think next year, our removal rate will probably be similar to this year's. It could be greater. Part of the limiting factor on the removals, though, is our workforce, and we can only do so much, so we're probably going to have a few trees that we're not able to get to because we don't have enough people to cover all of the things we need to do. All right, today, we've removed 705 ash trees from the parkways in Montgomery, and there's still about 1,600 ash trees left out there, so. All right, our pruning efforts and the good warm winter last year resulted in increased pruning. We did 1,310 trees last year, or the previous year, and then this last year, we did 2,191 trees. Twelve of the large trees were pruned by Kramer Tree Service, and that was something that was new this year. The trees on Kingston, which are very large, a lot of the honey locusts in that had a lot of dead limbs and problems up within them, and they've never been pruned out. So I hired Kramer to come in, and they did a lot of cleaning and thinning of the trees. And the trees, if you ever go out there and take a look at them, they, they look so much better, and they're a lot safer. We did have residents calling that were concerned about the limbs falling when their kids are playing in the yards. And so it was a good start. I was happy with the way it turned out. I want to try to increase that aspect of our pruning a little bit this year, try to get some of the older neighborhoods where the trees are more, a little more safe that way. It also reduces the amount of storm damage you get when you have storms, when you take care of the trees all the time. Then you take out the weak stuff, so that when you get a wind event or ice event, you have less material that comes down. So, at our current rate of pruning that we had this year, if we're able to maintain that, and we're way behind this year because of all the snow we had last year, last winter, but if we're able to maintain that, 2000 will put us on a pruning cycle, we'll get to all the trees once every five years. I'd like to shorten that up to once every four years, but again, that's like a labor issue thing, so. So that's part of the continued pruning goals. I would like to reduce that cycle to four years. It's just that the, you would have a lot better care of the trees that way. The other thing I want to try to do, which we've been doing, but I want to increase on is when we're pruning the large trees in town, and then inspecting the trees for risk while we're out pruning, which is one of the things we do, too. And these are some of the trees that we've noticed while we're out pruning. This tree was split all the way down the middle there, which, if you're just driving down the road, you don't really notice. And then the tree at the bottom right is a linen tree that was on Riverside Drive, that if you actually looked at the tree, even walking on the sidewalk, it looked very sound. And the bottom of the tree was very sound, and the top of the tree is very sound. But there is about a three-foot middle section of tree, which was hollow. If you look at, you can kind of see the dark inner. That's all rotten, and only the outside wood was solid. So it was a very dangerous tree because the top had all its full weight, and it was like being held up like by a beer can, basically. And if that ever got a twist to it, it would just crumble and all come down at once. Okay, here's a little graph of our tree replacements, and we've been increasing our tree plantings a little bit every year. In 2011, we were able to get a grant, which helped out with tree replacements. Last year, we applied for the grants, we weren't able to get them. This year, the grants aren't even offered, so, at least not so far. So we do have a little bit of increase going, which is good. And so, this is our, what we do for plantings, we do, I go to several other local nurseries in the area, and I request pricing of the trees per species. Different nurseries will have different prices per species. Not all this, definitely the species costs are a lot different. So some of the slower-growing things, or trees that are considered higher quality, like some of the oaks and things that we really do need to get for more diversity, they cost more money than if we were going to go back and plant a lot more maples or, I'm sure you'd probably get green ash real cheap right now, so. But, so anyway, there's quite a variance in the price, and there's differences between nurseries, because some people specialize in one type or the other. The size, and then we go through that, and then whatever we find, the guy, it's, we try to get the pricing where we get like the best value, so it's not, I'm not always looking for the cheapest price. If the tree's a piece of garbage, I'm not buying it just because it's cheap, but I want a reasonably good quality. It's not the best quality, it's a good, sound tree, a healthy tree, and try to get the best price for it, and that's how we're selecting the trees. The tree size that we're planting back to the parkways is two to two-and-a-half inch trunk diameter, and I do prefer the two-inch trees, because a smaller tree has less stress and will adapt better to the parkway situation and grow. And they'll get to be big. I used to be small and skinny. I turned out pretty big, so, they will, too. Then we also separate the planting. We put the planting out for bid. Last year, JPC did our tree planting for us. They charged $130 to plant the tree and to take out the old stump that was there, up to 12 inches. And then they were also putting mulch on the trees. And then they also did a first watering, which was not in the original contract, but they did go ahead and do that to help us out, too, so. Was a pretty good help. Things went fairly smooth. There was a few corrections we had to have made on some of the trees that were planted, but overall, they did a pretty good job. They were very timely in doing it, so. Public Works crews, we've also planted a few of the trees ourselves in-house. That helps keep the cost down with our budget money somewhat. Again, it's a time, labor problem as to how many we can do. Let's see, then like the selection, again, we're looking to increase the diversity. And then last year, our planting costs per tree planted in the ground ranged from about $350 on the high end to $90 on the low end, and the average for all the trees was $235 per tree. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and he can.
I'll bring it on.
So.
Just right here, then.
Yeah.
That's yours? All right, thank you, everyone. I'm going to talk a little bit about the future challenges of our urban forestry program. As Ed had highlighted earlier, you can see there's a large difference in the number of tree removals that we have to do and the number of tree replacements that we can afford to do. And this chart is designed to show that. So this 2011, we're using that as our baseline year, quite honestly, because our record-keeping for removals was not that accurate or precise before that. So I, when I made the graph, I said, well, we'll use 2011 as our baseline. So in 2012, you can see that we planted 81, removed 134. 2013, 134 planted, 452 removed, most of those Emerald Ashbore. 2014 estimates, we hope to plant 150, and we feel we'll end up removing 400 trees approximately. So again, you can see there's been a gap each year, and you just follow that along, the gaps continuing to grow. So if we take that, then, and go to the next step of our, what we call our tree deficit, and that's the difference between the number of trees we've removed over the years and the number that we've been able to replace. So, we feel that by our estimates, we had a 60-tree deficit coming out of 2011. So at the end of 2011, overall, we had removed 60 more trees than we had replanted. And just for note, the planting is an annual number, the deficit is a cumulative number, so a little different there. So in 2012, we were able to plant 81 trees. We still, overall, were 121 trees behind. In 2013, we planted 134 trees, but our total deficit grew to 439. Again, you'll remember the last slide where we had quite a few removals that year, 452. And then this year, if, if our work goes according to plan, we'll get in another 150 trees, but our deficit overall will be 689 trees. So what we're saying is that at the end of 2014 work season, come September, October, there'll be almost 700 tree sites where we've had to remove a tree that we've not been able to replant, mainly due to budget limitations. So, definitely going to be a challenge for us. As Ed noted, there's 1,600 ash trees, just probably, just in the parkway, that doesn't take into account. That doesn't take into account private ash trees. Now, we don't do anything with private trees, but... So, we have another 1,600 ash trees that it's highly likely that a large number of those will need removal because of the emerald ash bore, not to mention the rest of the forest. So, some of the challenges, it'll take us, right now, it'll take us three years at our current rate to replace the 439 tree deficit that we face today. If we're able to implement this year's program, that'll grow to five years to, you know, at 150 or so trees a year. We're looking at five years to catch up on that deficit if we don't add any more to the deficit. So, if you take that average replacement cost of $235 per tree that Ed had highlighted earlier, that's about $162,000 today just to catch up. So, again, there're going to be some budgetary challenges placed before all of you, and we'll try to lay that out each budget year, but definitely something we're going to ask you to consider. While we're talking about replacements, Ed and I have worked on a replacement priority. Again, we don't have enough trees to replace every tree that's been taken down, so we have to make some decisions on which ones are going to go back in. So, first of all, we kind of start by considering the property types, and this is our highest priority down to our lower priority. So, if we have to make a choice, we're going to choose to replace it at a residential parkway in the neighborhoods where the homeowner, where the residents live. Next, we'll go to landscape buffers, down to roadway medians, and finally, non-residential parkways. So, that's everything, obviously, that isn't, doesn't have a home in front of it. So, it could be a vacant lot, it could be a school, it could be a business, could be an industry, but that is our lower priority. So, as we're trying to pick locations. Other things that we consider, the Parkway Tree Donation Program, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second, but basically, if someone is willing to purchase a tree, we will make that a top priority to get it planted. We will guarantee that that tree will get planted this season. Next, we look at overall tree spacing within the area. Now, that area can change. It could be within a few houses of that spot, it could be the whole block, it could be the neighborhood. But our goal is to develop a consistently spaced urban forest. We don't want to have large gaps in one neighborhood and no gaps in another. After that, we go to the one-tree-per-lot standard, and that's kind of, that's an unofficial standard. I think our actual standard is based on spacing of trees. But all other things being equal, we're going to try to get one tree on each lot. So, if somebody had three trees and had them all removed, and somebody had one tree, we may do one of the three trees first, but then we would do the one tree on this lot before we went back, again, assuming the other criteria were met. A date of tree removal. Right now, there's a lot of trees that have been out of the ground for two and three seasons. We are not doing a first-out, first-in program. Again, if all these other conditions are equal, then the tree that's been out the longest will get replanted. But just because a tree's been out a long time doesn't mean it goes to the top of the list. And then finally, resident support. We have some residents who are very committed to the tree program. They want trees in their yard, they're willing to help maintain them and water them. We have other residents who, quite honestly, aren't as concerned and oftentimes don't contact us. So, again, if all these other items are equal, and we have a resident who is really concerned about getting a tree, we'll try to make that happen. A little bit more on the replacement priority, improperly-sighted trees will not be replaced. So, there's a funny picture for you. It's a fire hydrant having a tree go around it. They're not ours, thankfully. And the replacement criteria guidelines, they're not hard and fast rule. Ultimately, our decisions will be based on the maximum benefit to the community and to the urban forest. It's hard to identify exactly every situation that might come up, and we're having to identify replacement locations. So, we'll start with those criteria, but we may have to adjust them from time to time. The tree donation program. We've talked informally at this, in this room, about our tree donation program, and we've informally had sort of, kind of, had a program where if people wanted to purchase a tree, we've tried to make that happen for them. Last year, we offered a resident participation program on a trial basis and a more formal resident participation program. We had eight participants who contributed enough money to buy 11 Parkway trees, and we planted those. So, what I'm proposing this year is that we formalize this program so we can start publicizing it on our website, on Facebook, and really get the word out. The Village of Montgomery Parkway Tree Donation Program, and here's some of the criteria and rules. Program is voluntary, cost-share program. Sponsored trees are made a priority, so if you pay the money to get that tree, we will guarantee that it will get in. It's an incentive, quite honestly, to get people to participate. The cost to the resident is currently $150. That can change over time, but we feel that is a high enough value to cover average costs for most of the trees we purchase. Talked a little bit about the size of the trees and where they'll come from. We properly planted mulch. The village arborist, Ed, will meet with the resident to try to discuss the type of tree they would like to have and the type of tree we feel best suits the area or is needed for the program. More often than not, the high percentage of the time, we can find agreement on that. Oftentimes, people come in and say, "I want a blaze maple, blaze maple, blaze maple." Well, you may remember from that species distribution list, we have about 25% or 30% maples in the community already, so it doesn't mean they won't get one if there aren't a lot in that area, but it's the type of thing we want to look at. Residents encouraged to provide additional watering, and there is no replacement guarantee. So, if you pay the 150 and the tree dies, it dies, we'll remove it again, and we'll start over. So, that wraps up the formal program. Now, any questions?
Yes.
I guess I would ask for comments on this, on the tree donation program and the board's consensus that we move forward with, with publicizing that and really trying to work up some enthusiasm for it.
I have a couple of questions and some comments, if I may. I think Mike and Ed hit the nail on the head with the, particularly the ash bore problem with all the trees that we have to remove. The average cost of a tree, or tree replacement is $235. It equates to, what was it, $162,000 over the life of that? I think that the Plan Commission and the Village Board potentially lose some opportunities sometimes when some of the projects come before us, and we see, okay, they're heavy on trees, and we kind of slash, "You don't need this many trees." And maybe what we start doing is, okay, if this gas station can only fit seven trees, but it's required to have 10, let's have them pay the $235 into this tree fund. That way, okay, now we've got three more trees, and start looking at it that way, and having the development, if they're not able to all go onto those properties the way that they should, start to help fund this emerald ash bore problem. And my other comment, because we are heavy on maple, and I'm assuming that a majority of the poor trees are the emerald ash bore-related trees, what other, Ed, a question for you, what other species would you like to see? I know that you had mentioned oak. Are coffee tree a possibility, or ginkgo? And I know coffee tree and ginkgo are more expensive, really, and so are the oaks, really, too.
Right, yeah, so we, I do have a tree, a suggestive tree list that I've put together. Kentucky coffee tree is on the list. We do have tulip trees on the list.
Okay.
Still the hackberries, some of the hybrid elms. The linens, we're kind of heavy on linens, we're heavy on flowering pears, too, but those are still on the list. A lot of it will depend on the neighborhood, because if you go out to Parkview, it's all silver maples primarily.
Okay.
So, if you're going to put in some of the other trees there that we're heavy on elsewhere, it's, they'll still fit in there. And then if we have another area of town that, you know, doesn't have a lot of maples on, in an area, which there's very few that have that, but there could be, then I would still consider putting a maple in. I've got yellowwood on the tree, and some of it'll depend on what I can actually get a hold of to get put in, because a lot of the other trees, when you're trying to get more diversity, the trees aren't commonly grown in the nurseries right now, and all the towns are looking to get more diversity for the same reason. So, therefore, those trees can become a little shortage on them. I also am a little concerned because tree prices have started to move back up because the economy's starting to prove there's more building going on. So, our opportunity to plant trees, the cost is going to start going up quite a bit now, which is good for people in the industry, but it's not good for people buying them. So, the Kentucky coffee trees and that, I do have some residents already complaining about them because they're messy.
The mess.
And so, that's another thing we have to look at, too. So, some of those types of trees that I know create a mess, I would tend, if I were to plant them, I would try to put them into, you know, eventually out of, maybe out of the residential area unless the person totally understands. I always try to explain the benefits and the negatives of all the trees that we're suggesting get put into a yard.
We could remove the coffee tree and give them a sweet gum and see which one they would decide.
Yeah, that could be, yeah. So, but I'm going to try to, if I can use those trees, if I can use them along, you know, some of the parkways and stuff where we have contractors that are cleaning things up and taking care of things where it's not going to matter as much, we'll still try to get those in.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate the horticulture humor that none of us got.
Yes.
Feeling like I was at the chess club for a minute.
Blame it on the day job.
A couple of questions, if I may. How realistic would it be to try to plant or grow our own set of trees to, you know, looking ahead over a five, 10-year period?
Again, it's a labor issue because you can't just plant them and let them go. And I've seen other areas try to do it, other towns try to do it. Actually, I think Kendall County tried to do it. And what you usually end up seeing is, I think Kendall County's was next to the YMCA in Plano, and the trees are still there, and they're overgrown, and they've never been used. And I see that a lot. A sandwich had a small number of trees that were put out by, you know, someone in the past, and then there's a change of management of Public Works Director, whatever. Those trees were inherited, but nothing, they use them some, but really, they've just kind of gotten overgrown, and they're not going to be usable. So, that's kind of a concern risk. There are some tree consortiums where you can contract people to grow trees for you, usually though you have to lock in a price ahead of time. What happened when the prices went way down, those trees became more expensive. You do kind of guarantee that you're able to get the varieties that you want to get. You are, I guess your price is locked in, so if they went higher, you wouldn't know what your price is. And then you can also often get like a better quality tree because you have them grown to a certain standard. So, you'll see people that have great sales in certain varieties of trees, and they have too many of them, but a lot of times, that's because those trees are getting out of size for them, and, or there's been some damage to them or something wrong with them. And if we start putting stuff back in, I mean, a lot of the builders, some of the trees that were put in already were damaged where they were put in, and then we're just stuck with the problem then later on. So, we don't want to be creating more problems down the road by putting in trees that have, you know, splits or cracks or poor structure or whatever. We want to try to, try to avoid that.
My second question is maybe more of an accounting question. Through the efforts of this survey, now, we know how many trees we have, we know roughly their value, we know roughly what they would cost to replace. Would they begin to show up on our books then as a capital asset or part of the value of the community?
We look at capital assets on an individual basis, and so although overall, it's $3.6 million on an individual basis, and I'd had the little price tag that showed the $235 with the value, on an individual basis, that's not going to show up on the capital assets.
Any comments on the tree donation program?
I'd really like to see us pursue that and promote it vigorously enough that the public's well aware of it.
I agree.
I completely agree with that. I just had one, just had one question about the trees. If we have 1,600, let's say, ash trees that we know at some point are probably going to become infected and need to be torn down, and there's several hundred thousand dollars worth of tree replacement that we know it's unlikely we're going to get to that in five years, maybe. I was trying to remember who said this quote, but the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, and the second-best day is tomorrow or today. What, have you thought of, have you thought of a program where we just get, I mean, if you were to get tiny little, you know, sapling trees or whatever they are, that the, I forget what organization is that sells them for $20 and have a resident put that in and start watering it? By the time we get around to have funding for our tree replacement, you might have a decent-sized tree, or, and I'm not a horticulture guy.
You'd have a weed. They wouldn't know how to maintain it, and they'd probably run it over with a mower a couple of times. But the way, it's got to be maintained, it's got to be pruned as it goes up, and if the residents don't understand that, it's essentially, you're going to have clump-form street trees. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you're going to have clump-form street trees.
And he agrees.
Okay.
And yet another term I don't understand, a what tree?
Clump-form. Clump-form. It's multiple stems coming out of the ground.
Okay.
We'll give you horticulture for dummies.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That presentation, if you like, Jeff.
I would like to thank Director Poobins for keeping it simple for me. Thank you.
Likewise.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to Item C this evening, which is a summary that we'll kind of tag-team here of the Metro West Drive-Down. So, with that, I'll ask trustee Spurling for her summary of that, and then Jeff and I'll chime in.
Sure, certainly. On April 8th and 9th, the Metro West Council of Government held their annual drive down to Springfield. President Brawley, Administrator Zofel, Attorney Anderson, Engineer Wallers, and I all were in attendance. During this time, our collective municipalities meet with as many legislators as possible to bring our joint concerns to their attention. This year's group had the largest number of attendees to date, with over 40 people. We were representing over 750 people in Kane, Kendall, and DeKalb Counties.
750,000.
Yes, 750,000 people. Thank you. This year's message included positions on the following bills. We are in favor of Municipal Authority Modernization Act, also known as Home Rule Light. President Brawley took the lead on this in many meetings, and I'm going to leave that for you to talk about a little more in a few minutes. We were also encouraging continued reform of the public safety pension systems. And then there were three bills that we were, Metro West was opposed to. These bills impose unfunded mandates and loss of local control on municipalities. House Bill 5485, Minimum Manning, that actually passed in the House, and it is currently referred to the Senate Assignments Committee. House Bill 4418, referendum required to close fire facility, also known as Muni Fire Department dissolution, that passed in the House and is also referred to the Senate Assignments Committee. Senate Bill 1681, Unified Fire Protection District, that passed in the Senate and is currently referred to the House Rules Committee. I have details on each of those bills or in the folders if anyone is interested in taking a look at that. I would say our time there was a little bit off. It was the week of the third readings. This is when the legislators are voting on the various bills, and it's difficult for them to leave the chamber floor to come out and meet with us. We ended up meeting with several staff, people, and a few of the legislators. However, we were never rushed. I feel that we were listened to, and just on a side note, the Capitol was packed with a couple of different school groups that were there lobbying and protesting. So, it was a little chaotic, exciting and chaotic. Anyway, because of our large number of attendees, we split into a couple of different groups. Our group, our first meeting was scheduled with House Republican Leader Jim Durkin. Instead, we ended up meeting with two gentlemen that advise the Republican Party. I felt that meeting went very well. We had their undivided attention, they took a lot of time to listen, and they asked us several follow-up questions. Right after that, we ran into Representative Bob Pritchard, and we were able to speak with him very briefly. So, it was just a chance meeting in the hallway. In between meetings, we had the opportunity to observe the House of Representatives in action. We went on the second floor in the gallery, and they were discussing pension reform forever. Our next meeting was scheduled with Senate Minority Leader Christine Redonia. We ended up meeting with her press secretary. Again, I didn't feel we were rushed. We were able to present our message and leave information with her as well. In between the meetings, we had the opportunity to meet Jerry Peck of the Illinois Manufacturers Association, and that introduction was courtesy of Attorney Anderson. We really appreciate that. We believe Mr. Peck can be a tremendous help to our village. We invited him to come to our board anytime he's in town to come speak with us. We're looking forward to working with him to hopefully bring some additional manufacturers into town. to hopefully bring some additional manufacturers into town and hopefully within our TIF district. So, we're excited about that meeting as well. Our next meeting was with House Majority Leader Barbara Flynn Curry and Deputy House Majority Leader Frank Martino. President Brawley took the lead in that meeting. And I will tell you, Representative Flynn Curry asked a lot of questions and really kept him on his toes. He did a fantastic job answering her questions. I think also that meeting went very well, and we also had our largest group that came together. So, they really had to pay attention to us because there were so many of us in the room. Our last meeting of the day was with Governor Quinn's Deputy Chief of Staff. And again, he took quite a bit of notes and asked us several follow-up questions. And then that evening, there was a joint reception with DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference. It was held at the Governor's Mansion, and Governor Quinn did make an appearance. President Brawley and I had the opportunity to speak with him very, very briefly. And that conversation was mainly about Caterpillar. But we got in there and talked to him for a few minutes, so that was, that was a good, a good thing that happened. We started our second day in Springfield with a breakfast meeting. We had our lobbyists give a presentation regarding how Springfield really works, and that was very interesting. Next, we traveled to the IDNR, the Department of Natural Resources. We met with four officials from the agency. Engineer Wallers took the lead in this meeting. He gave a presentation on water planning activities for our overall area and answered their questions quite thoroughly. Our last meeting was with the IEPA, and again, Engineer Wallers took the lead in this meeting. Here, he covered the importance of the State Revolving Loan Fund, NPDES permits, and the statewide nutrient standard. So, that is how we spent our time in Springfield. I will pass it back to you.
Anything to add?
I think she's covered it very well, so.
Just two or three things that I would say briefly. That you guys know that Engineer Wallers and Attorney Anderson are there representing Metro West. It's an added benefit that they also represent Montgomery and some of the other communities. So, it's excellent that we have our attorney and our engineer down there with us. The, the thing that I was gonna mention is that Attorney Anderson and I actually went down on Monday to have a meeting with stakeholders, which is the day before this. We had a meeting with Representative Pritchard, Senator Linda Holmes, Senator Karen McConaughey, and several stakeholders that were, you know, both obviously for and against the Home Rule Light that we've been working on. So, it was a very productive meeting. I think that nothing's going to happen on that bill this year, but it's something that I hope Metro, excuse me, that Metro West moves forward with next session. And certainly from where I sit, it's something that I advocate for. And the last thing I was gonna say is I encourage any other board member to attend in the future if you have time. And if you don't have anything to add on that, then if there's any questions, let us know, and we'll move on. Item D this evening, which is the new residential construction fee rebate program. And I'll turn it over to Director Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two years ago, the Village Board adopted an ordinance which put into place a $2,000 maximum rebate for single-family home permits. At that time, you set a time limit of two years. So, this program is about ready to expire at the end of April. Since that time, the village has seen 45 residential permits come online and participate in this program. The ordinance outlines four areas in which permit fees can be reduced by a maximum of $2,000 total. That is in the building permit fee itself, village impact fees, the traffic impact fee, and the water tap fee. My review of this for the last year indicates that the majority of the time, the fee reduction or the rebate has been in the form of a water tap fee. So, that fee has been reduced. Question had come up about transportation impact fees, and that really hasn't been touched from the timeframe that I looked at some of the permits. Maybe in a few minimal amounts of money, but overall, the vast majority of it came from the water tap fee. Staff is recommending that we institute this program again for another two years. We think that it's beneficial to generate the rooftops in the subdivisions that we have under construction, and hopefully we'll see additional growth in that, in that area.
Thank you. Are there comments from the board on this?
I have a question. I can, and I guess the timeframe, two years ago, wouldn't have been during the housing boom. Is it really drawing builders to our community because we have this potential rebate, which it sounds like what we're being told is that it's, they're not really getting that big of a rebate?
Well, they, in many cases, they are getting $2,000. Okay? So, that is, that part of the program is working in terms of the overall amount of dollars. It doesn't happen on every permit, but I'd say in general, it's 1,500 to $2,000 per permit. So, that part's working. Whether or not it's drawing builders to the community, that's a little bit subjective. I can't really answer that. I don't really have the track record here to answer that. But we would see some natural amount of permits anyway because of the existing subdivisions that are under construction. But we hope that for Huntington Chase and some of the other subdivisions that are dormant at this time, that that would help to stimulate new development and a new builder coming in.
And I will add to that, that when we instituted this two years ago, I had the opportunity to talk to John Carroll and Omar from Ryland before they purchased the lots that they purchased on our west side of town. And while it wasn't the only deciding factor, it definitely helped. And it helped enough to where they came to us and asked us to basically commit to that for the rest of that, those developments. And I think we found a way to do that. So, that way when this expires, they don't have to go back and redo their pro forma on it.
That was actually an amendment to the annexation agreement, as I believe. So, that's locked in for the duration of those lots in that subdivision. This would be for the balance of the community where we do not have an amended annexation agreement.
I'm hearing whisperings that Hartz is going to actually start building homes again behind Menards. Is that true?
That is true. In fact, they've been in recently for two new model permits. So, they hope that that adjusted model program will generate some actual sales, but they have been in for two models.
But no building permits other than the two models?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
One question that came up was regarding roadway impact fees. I know that it hasn't been touched. Is everybody comfortable, if we were to move forward with this program again, to leave the possible areas to reduce a permit included, you know, include the roadway stuff or pull that out? Because I know that it's a little bit contradictory in that we're telling the public that we don't have the, whatever it is, $2.2 million that we need for roads, but yet we're reducing the home building permits for, you know, a new home by X.
I think you could take that section out since you said nobody's used it anyway, correct?
It's rare in the grouping that I've looked at for the last several months that we have utilized that portion of our fee program to have a rebate. So, seems to me that the ones we have on the books, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but the ones that we have on the books in terms of vacant lots out there that have the potential to develop now, we're able to pull it out of the water tap fee.
That's generally our priority. We've usually gone to the tap fee first and then work from there. Usually that's enough to cover it. Some of our subdivisions paid their impact fees upfront, so like some there aren't impact fees there. But we could certainly just change it to be the building permits and the tap-on fees and take out the impact fee and roadway fee.
I would be in agreement with that.
You're building quite a few over at Orchard and Parkway there.
With Ryland?
Yeah.
One thing that we, I think we put in the last time we approved this was to revisit it at one year. Do you guys wanna keep that in there again and see how things are churning in a year?
I'm sorry, one year?
Yeah, it's a two-year program, but then we discussed it at a year just to kinda see how the program is going, if we wanted to continue, so.
I'd prefer to do one year.
Okay. So, we'll put the one year in there. If there aren't any comments, we'll move forward with that.
And we're taking the roads out, right?
She was saying a one-year agreement, not review it.
You want a one-year agreement instead of the two, or you wanna revisit in one year?
I thought we were saying a one-year program.
Well, last time we did it was a two-year program, but we talked about it, or I don't think we had to vote to renew it. But it was something that we, staff brought up to the board at a year to see how the program is going. We could continue, we could cancel at that time.
Oh.
If we want to. Okay.
All right. And we will bring that forward.
Excellent. Thank you. Item E this evening, which is department updates. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Turn it over to Chief Myers.
Good evening. Thank you. I would like to recap last Saturday. Our recycle event was overwhelming. They had to bring a second truck in. We had over 60 TVs. I went out there and I was helping the guy because it was too much for two people. In addition to the recycling event, we had the shredding closer to the building. And when I talked to Stan, the owner, we had a lot of people that were from out of the area, so not necessarily resonant. So, he doesn't, he doesn't have a restriction, but I was just curious about that. But it went well. We had over 60 large TVs that were, that were recycled. And it was several towns doing the same thing. So, for us to be busy, that was pretty good. We have quite a few events coming up in the next 60 days. The May 15th, the Police Memorial at Mooseheart, if you're interested, let me know. On May 22nd...
Chief, what was the date of that?
May 15th. May 22nd, we have King County Office of the Year banquet. Also on May 16th, Deputy Chief Armando Sanders will graduate from Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command. Tickets for deadline on that is April 30th, if you're interested in attending. Thank you.
All right. Director Poobens?
Thank you. Quickly, just a reminder, we're gonna start fire hydrant flushing next week. This year's a little different. Next week will only be on the west side of town, so areas west of Orchard Road only. We'll continue our hydrant flushing in May with the remainder of the community in Boulder Hill subdivision. We're gonna see how the well-aid repairs proceed. They are underway right now, so we think it'll just be a few weeks, but we're gonna, we'd like to have well-aid up and running before we flush the remainder of the system. And then I did have a meeting with IDOT today regarding both Route 30 and the Illinois 31 projects. And again, the Illinois 31 interchange does include the Watkins Crossing. They had initially planned on starting the Watkins construction this week. That's going to be delayed approximately two weeks. They're reviewing their staging and construction plan. The Watkins construction has to tie in with the Route 31 reconstruction. Route 31 reconstruction is behind schedule, so it's kind of a domino effect. But we'll continue to monitor that, and I'll report back. Thank you.
Director Young?
Thank you. Briefly, we're making the final adjustments to the comprehensive plan. We've had some comments from board members. We've made some adjustment in the text, which I feel was a benefit. And I think it's moving forward nicely, and it will be up for final vote next Monday night before the Village Board. So, if you have any comments at this time, now's the time to give them to myself or Jared so that we can try to incorporate them if it's warranted. So, please do that. We have two possible development opportunities, or I should say rehab of existing facilities, opportunities within the TIF district. So, staff is reviewing one that's more significant in terms of their request for what funds would be involved in moving a company into a vacated building on Awkut. There is another smaller operation that's a woodworking operation that wants to move into 1,001 Awkut where Midwest Siding has some available square footage. That looks pretty promising, and I think it might be quickly moved on in terms of them coming into that structure and occupying several thousand square feet. So, that's a good thing for the, for the TIF district, I believe. And then also, as was in the weekly notes, we're rolling out the property maintenance program for 2014. Both the Building Inspector and the Building Inspection Supervisor and Code Enforcement Officer were out last week, and we have 200 properties that we're reviewing various code situations. Letters will go out in May, and we'll give them the opportunity to complete any maintenance issues by the end of September. So, that's the news from community development.
All right. Director Van Vorn?
No updates at this time.
All right. Excellent. Moving on to newer unfinished business. Does, any board member, Trustee Heinz?
Yeah, I'd like to, but when they re-blacktop Douglas Road by the bank, that light's been out ever since, and I've brought that to the attention of the village, Gary and a couple of other people. And when they gonna fix that light? I was asked again today when I was at the bank.
I'm, I'm sorry, Trustee. Which light?
Like in front of Montgomery Bank.
Is it a street light or a traffic?
A street light. That's, gee, when was that road fixed? That was back before Thanksgiving.
I'll discuss it with Gary tomorrow, and we'll get that moved forward. I'm not sure why it hasn't been repaired yet.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
On a Public Works note, thank you for fixing that pothole at the end of Griffin.
You're welcome.
I finally saw that pothole, by the way, when it was filled.
He was the one that created it. I made sure it was fixed.
Doesn't matter to us. We just fill them.
I'd like to mention that on Saturday, May 17th, we'll be planting the flowers along the Mill Street Bridge. And we could certainly use volunteers to help with that planting if individuals or companies would like to be part of the planting team. It takes about an hour to an hour and a half. It's not hard work. It's labor of love, and those flowers are beautiful all season long. So, we hope people will come join us.
Thank you.
I would like to thank Trustee Bond for the Route 30 litter pickup again this past Saturday. Good time had by all. So, it's always, it's kinda nice. We had a really nice turnout to get some parents and some kids out there to participate and help keep the community looking nice. It was nice.
Sorry I couldn't be there. I was dealing with some health issues.
It's amazing what some people will do.
I have a follow-up for the chief and the deputy chief. I appreciate the memo that you all put together regarding some of my concerns since last week. In terms of the part about adding another detective to the roster, only after our newest hire gets out of training, I feel much more comfortable about that situation. As I said repeatedly, I was very concerned about officers getting pulled or having less officers on the street. My other comment or question to you, in this memo, you're referencing that the lieutenant is going to be on the street. But when we had our meeting at the Police Department, I specifically asked, I asked you to confirm that the sergeants are out on the street, and then I asked you about the lieutenant. And I was told that the lieutenant would rarely be on the street. But now the information that's getting presented to the board, everyone else is being told here publicly that yes, the lieutenant is going to be on the street. So, I'm having a bit of a problem with the contradiction. So, if you could maybe address that for me, I'd appreciate it.
You, will you, can you tell me where in that memo?
It's in the second paragraph. We propose lieutenant position to assist with the span of control for the Deputy Chief and Chief of Police and to immediately add more officer presence on the street. And then you're including in the table further down in that memo, you are including the lieutenant as part of patrol operations. I'm under the impression that means that person is going to be on the street and still handling police operations. I'm not clear how that can be handled.
No, he, he won't be on the street.
That position is going to be directly responsible for the patrol operation, so they have to see how they're running. So, they will be, you don't, I am unable to be on the street and in the neighborhoods. This position will be. They will be out there. They will be out there.
But not, not driving around like a patrol sergeant 40 hours a week. No.
Okay. That was my concern, was how could somebody be handling our police operations and then still be counted as someone on the street?
Sure.
Are you looking at half the time? Or what are you?
Well, we, we would use, currently, we have two sergeants on medical, so he would fill in more than half the time. But I, I'm not comfortable with saying how much per week or per day he'll be on the street. But to be in charge of police operations like that, you, you have to see what's going on or you won't be able to correct issues or, or make suggestions to, to Armando.
Do you, do you feel because this is a new position, there's still maybe some tweaking that needs to be done in terms of the expectations and the duties? Because it just seems, from the time we met and what was presented to me, and then I brought up my arguments, and then some of the answers kind of changed. Well, okay, now the lieutenant could fill in for a sergeant. Again, then I'm wondering, how can a lieutenant be in charge of police operations and then take over when we had the list, the task list or the responsibilities for each sergeant? How could they then step into that position?
We have that problem right now. So we have to remedy it as an inherent with the operation. If we lose somebody, we have to fill their job duties. So it's currently being done and divvied up amongst the other sergeants and myself. So that problem, if we have it, then the lieutenant will fill in. But we'll still assist with all the other duties that they have to fulfill. That, that, that problem won't ever go away. If someone goes out, we have to fill it. Either like we're doing now, okay, you take care of that, you do that, you do that. If we have a lieutenant, we'll have them fill in, but we'll also be assisting with all the other duties. It, it's something we currently have to do right now. We're, we're dealing with it right now. To have a lieutenant position won't, will assist us to say, okay, one person can fill in more. And again, I'll help and we can divvy up the other responsibilities, but that will still be an issue if, if it comes up. It's happening now.
It seems like we're trying to nail down kind of a moving target because there's an ebb and flow in your workforce on a daily basis. People calling in sick, vacation time, injuries. People are in, people are out, and you have an ebb and flow every day. So you're, you're reacting accordingly. But in, big picture, perfect world, everybody's here. This sergeant or this lieutenant's position is overseeing the sergeants and is overseeing the police operations on the street. So they'll be on the street in a supervisory role. They'll be out checking in, checking on their officers. There won't be giving out citations. There'll, there'll be a presence on the street, but it won't be a, an enforcement presence? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. And also, the, we, we created this memo after we met with Administrator Zofa this morning on behalf of President Brawley's concerns. So I'm not sure, are these concerns answering your concerns too?
Yes, they did cover most of them.
Okay. One additional thing, we, we did talk about the shift. In the beginning, it was Monday through Friday. And after, we discussed it after the last meeting. And I, I made the comment that he would work, could work Tuesday to Saturday. But if in the summertime is most common for the sergeants to use vacation. With our sergeants, we have over 14 weeks of vacation time. And most of them, we, we only let one sergeant off on, one patrol sergeant off on vacation per week. Most of them want to have a week in the summer. Now, we don't let them all take, for an example, we have a sergeant that has four weeks. We don't let him take four weeks during the summer, nor will we let him take four weeks in a row, not even three weeks in a row. Two weeks is the max. During that time, the lieutenant would, would help us fill in. And if that means working a Saturday, then he'll work that, he or she.
You're getting ready to hire one more patrolman, correct? In, in May? You got one on the budget next year?
November.
Yes, we have one approved for a November hire, which there's no academy after September. So it technically will be hired January 1st for a, an academy that starts the first Monday of January 2015.
Are we under requirements to, to compile a new list at this point? Or how much longer do we have off the old list?
We, we are in the process of setting the date. You're correct. Our current list expires in August of this year. We're looking at June 21st or the week after July 4th. Aurora's testing on July, I'm sorry, June 28th. That was our original date and we canceled that because of the conflict.
I appreciate the memo, chief.
Thank you very much.
Good information for all of us to have.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the new biz, new business tonight? I do have one comment. I found out actually last week when we were sitting here at our board meeting. Earlier this year, I applied for a training program. That's a three-week program that will happen this summer. I found out on Monday that I was accepted to that. So I did ask staff to include half of the tuition for that program. The other half, I'm applying for grants and scholarships for. I don't think that it's something that the full, the village should really contribute the full amount, but certainly the village benefits from this program. So at any rate, I've talked to most of you about this already, but I've had, the budget has been updated to include that, that you guys will see on Monday. Just wanted to make everybody aware. With that, there is no executive session this evening, and so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
Move, second?
Do, do we need to talk about the?
No.
No?
Billboard?
I didn't even see that.
It was in the.
I think that was in your mailbox.
Okay.
Yeah.
Read up on it.
Move, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
One second before you call roll on that. Whoops.
I, I apologize, trustee Lee, we, we are replacing one officer, two.
That's right, man. Okay.
So I, I forgot that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. You can call the roll.
Trustee Hines.
You.
Trustee Ungerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Trustee Lee.
Yes. Your merger? Thank you.